Good evening, everyone. We will begin shortly. Oh, and this meeting will be recorded and posted on our website tomorrow if you need to send out for resources. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Patty. Welcome back. We were a little bit lost without you last week. I think we did our best, but we assure are happy to have you back and coordinating all the technical stuff with us. So thanks so much, Patty. I appreciate it. Welcome, everyone. I appreciate your time tonight, joining us tonight. Wow, do we have a lot to talk about since the last time we talked. We have graduation announcements. We have an amended executive order from our governor. We have some, all sorts of other things that have been questions as a result of the executive order amendment today that I hope to go over with you tonight. And we have the virtual graduation celebration that I'd like to update you on. And I'd like to start with that, if I can, please. As I spoke to you all about last week, we are having a virtual senior celebration on May 30th at 2:00 PM Central, 1:00 PM Mountain Time. We are really excited about that. We've obviously, as I shared with you last week, we've confirmed the governor as a speaker. We will have a student speaker from the state superintendent's student cabinet, which I'm really excited about. She's a young lady from Napoleon, North Dakota. That's been on my, the state superintendent cabinet for about 18, 20 months now. She is graduating, will be going on to become a speech-language pathologist. So excited to hear her. She's just gone through this whole pandemic COVID-19 event with such class and dignity. So I'm sure she'll have a great message to share. We continue to work on getting one of our North Dakota young people, or North Dakota native young people, back to be our keynote speaker and are waiting to hear just a little bit more confirmation from that team before we can announce that. So continue to work on that. I will say also, though, that Josh Jamel, Jamel, I think I said his name correctly, has agreed to give a few words of encouragement to our, to our graduates that are on the, on that senior celebration, May 30th. So again, pretty exciting to have him provide some, some words as a North Dakota native graduating from Minut Magic City Campus, 1991 graduate, and then, of course, a Minut State University Beaver at that time, before he went out to Hollywood and became famous. So again, we have Governor Burgum, a student speaker, Josh Jamel, and one other keynote who is a North Dakota native that we're waiting on to get confirmation. So I'm going to ask all of you as school board members, we write, we have at this moment, 65 of our high schools have responded and have provided information, either a senior class photo, or a collage of all the seniors' individual photos, or something unique to each of the high schools that they represent. So 65 of our 181 high schools in the state have responded and will be part of this celebration. So I'd ask you as school board members, just check with your superintendent to see if your school, to ensure that your school is represented during this wonderful celebration, that we are planning for the seniors, where Governor Burgum will send them on their way as a new North Dakota fully grown citizen, as a graduate. So if you have not, please just contact our office. We have about 12 members of the team working with our high, our high school counselors. Sometimes the counselors we're working with, high school principals, senior class advisors. But just check with your superintendent to make sure that you, your high school will be represented during that celebration, that hour on May 30th. The other thing that I would ask is, I'd also love to have your help and support in making sure that all of the seniors from your high school, our high schools in some cases, are logging in that day to hear governors speak to them specifically live and to have the senior, or excuse me, the student speaker speak to them live, as well as possibly the keynote. We're not sure if that person will be able to record, have to pre-record, or be live, live broadcast as well. So would love to have our seniors log in with their North Dakota Teams account. Every student in the entire state of North Dakota, as well as every teacher in the entire state, has a Microsoft Teams account. They've had that since last legislative session, where the legislature provided access to Microsoft Teams for every one of our 110, 115,000-plus students in North Dakota. So just using, having your student log into that Teams environment and be able to chat in the chat box with each other and have their school celebrated as seniors this year. So I will stop with that. That's enough of that. Let's talk about high school celebrations. I want to just make one sort of clarification. As the executive order guidelines came out this week about opening up schools to, for seven specific uses and purposes, the, this guidance as well states clearly that the decisions will be made by our local school districts, school boards, and superintendents. And so there was some, maybe a bit of uncertainty or a lack of clarity about whether there needed to be an official board approval of high school graduation ceremonies and/or board approval of the return to in-person use of our school buildings for those seven purposes that I'll go over. So just to be clear, what it states is that the superintendent and school boards work together to make those decisions, but there is no necessity, absolutely no necessity, to have official board action. So to, I mean, each local school district will determine what they will expect or what they will want to fit the community needs and the community desire. So there is no official board approval that is necessary for either a high school graduation ceremony or the use of, access of use. So now I would like to move on just to a little bit of sharing of information about the governor's executive order. So essentially, as you all know, on March 15th, in response to the CDC guidance, public and non-public, non-public schools were closed to students beginning March 16th. So the second thing is the understanding that the governor has understood many school districts offer, and many students depend on the availability of academic programming during the summer months. And these uses for academic programming are including, but not limited to, the Extended School Year Program, Head Start, 21st Century Community Learning Centers, and childcare programs licensed by the Department of Human Services. So as of Monday, March 11th, Governor Burgum, by the virtue of his authority under the North Dakota Constitution, declared and ordered that at the discretion of local school boards and school superintendents, public and non-public school facilities may offer onsite programs as identified in the order, provided that the school district strictly adhere to the Department of Public Instruction's North Dakota K-12 Smart Restart Guidelines, Section 4, which is the Health and Safety Logistics Section. So the North Dakota, the North Dakota Smart, K-12 Smart Restart Guidelines, Section 4, which is the Health and Safety Logistics, that would be the section of the, of the guidance that is most important to you. Patty, if you can find that link to our North Dakota Smart Restart and put that in the chat right now, I would appreciate that. So everyone can know that it is on our COVID-19. You'll see up at school board on the screen that you're seeing now, you have a little banner up there that says DPI COVID Updates and Guidance. That is on all of our pages, including the homepage. If you click on that, it will take you directly to the page that has our North Dakota Smart Restart Guidance. But I will have Patty click that link, pull that up, and put the link on our, in the chat box for everyone to see. So if you scroll through that, Patty, you will also show them the table of contents. There we go. Thank you. So you'll see that there's the introduction, acknowledgements, general guidance. And then specifically, you'll see that the Health and Safety Logistics cover areas of safety actions, intensifying cleaning, disinfection, and ventilation, limit sharing, training all staff, checking for signs and symptoms, plan for when a staff member, student, or visitor becomes sick, maintaining healthy operations, and social distancing throughout the opening up of America again. So the onsite program, so you, it's, we should be very clear that we are dipping our toe. And the governor called it a soft reopening, a soft reopening. Dipping our toe into seeing how we might be able to have access to our schools by our students, practicing, if you will, for fall. So we're not opening up the buildings carte blanche for sports, or open gyms, or weightlifting, or anything like that. The governor is very clear that we are doing very specific things, seven purposes that we're opening our buildings up for. On-site programs may be offered during the summer months beginning June 1st. Very, very important, June 1st. On-site programs which may be offered during the summer months beginning June 1st are, you can give standardized tests. You can provide ACT, GED, and North Dakota ACT work keys. So again, GED tests, ACT tests, and ACT work keys can be provided, and our schools can be opened up for that. I want to be very clear that no school district has to do this. No school district should feel pressured to do this. This is only if a school district with their community in mind feels that it's the best thing for their community to open for any of these purposes, all of these purposes, or none of these purposes. Completely up to our local school boards and superintendents. The, the child, these guidelines were intended to be aligned to our North Dakota Childcare Guidance, which will limit our group sizes to 15 people or less. So if you choose to open up for testing, or any of these other issues that I'm about to mention, you must know that the maximum group size is 15 people, and that would include any teacher or other adults within that group. So the other, in addition to testing, the other opportunities for uses are summer school. So that would be summer school for elementary, middle, or high school students, extended school year programs, and 21st Century Community Learning Center programs. So all three of those programs are teaching and education, and they might all be clumped together when you talk about them, but I want to be clear about what they are. Summer school classes are courses, are classes that are given for elementary. That's not just necessarily credits. The elementary kids can go to summer school. The reason it's called summer school, the differentiation is, is summer school is paid for by the North Dakota Legislature. Those are state funds. The other term that is used that also means what some people call summer school is Extended School Year. Extended School Year is a term that is found in IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Those are for our students with disabilities, or our students with special needs. Sometimes through IDEA, students with disabilities need an Extended School Year. Those are generally, for the most part, paid for by federal funds, the cost of the Extended School Year programs. 21st Century Community Learning Center programs, they're also called 21st Century Programs, or after-school programs, or Extended School Year programs. Those are called, those are paid for by federal funds. Schools and communities pay for those after-school programs and summer time programs with federal dollars from a 21st Century grant. So those are allowable uses for our buildings to be opened up. Another allowable use is Head Start programs, and the final allowable use, no, not the final, childcare, so the second to final, childcare programs licensed by the Department of Human Services. So we have 51 schools in North Dakota who use their school buildings, or 51 communities in North Dakota who use their school buildings for childcare during the summer. These are programs licensed by the Department of Human Services. So the final, the final and seventh use that our school buildings may be open for are any summer student center programs. Some programs that might be a STEM camp or a robotics camp that is generally held. So those are also allowable uses as long as they are academic in nature. So those are the seven uses. No more than those, nothing more than those. If you're wondering, can my school building do this? Can my district do this? Look to see if your building can do it by looking at that, that, those seven listed. If they're not on their list, they're not allowable. There's been a question about, well, we have a class of 40 for driver's ed, for behind, or for classroom instruction of driver's ed. Can we bring them in the auditorium? Because our auditorium seats 400 people, and we only have 40. So we can bring 40 in, and we can seat them six feet apart. The answer is no. The governor didn't say an either-or. He said a both-and. So they must be six feet apart, and there can be no more than 15 people in a group. That is to minimize the mixing of groups and mixing of households in this soft test of reopening. The other part of the executive order is that from May 15th to May 30th, school buildings may be opened to allow students to return school property that's in their possession and allow student property currently in school buildings to be retrieved. There was no other guidance that was, was provided with that. I've had questions about, well, we're going to have to bring staff in. Is there a maximum capacity for our school building to do that? And no, there is no maximum capacity. It will be dependent on the size of your building, the size of your staff, and the different staging areas that might be, you might have available. If, if you have one teacher working in a gymnasium that has an X, a separate access to the outside, where one person can come in and manage 15 students there, and you could do a deep cleaning, and then another 15 students could come in, you may have someone be able to do that in the library, in the cafeteria, in the lobby. So there's no maximum capacity of a building. It just, we need you to use the sanitation guidance and have, have groups that will mix no more than 15 people. So hopefully that opens up some opportunity for our, our retrieval. Some of the questions that we had about returning school possessions and getting possessions like that art project that was supposed to be for Mother's Day, and was only, you know, was completed but never picked up. So those types of things. And I really want to stress again that nothing in this order requires a school district to offer any of these things or all of these things. It's completely up to a local school district. It also does not prohibit a school from continuing distance learning if they so choose. Since the governor's order has not been lifted, it's only been amended to allow these uses if it's chosen by the local school district, that means that distance learning can still be a mean of delivery of instruction. So that covers the executive order, and that is specific. Those school building facilities, indoor facilities, have seven very specific uses. Now, as a result of that, we've had a lot of inquiries to the governor's office and to our office about what about those outdoor facilities? What about those tracks, those football fields, those baseball diamonds? So the governor's office and I are in, in process of some Q and A that has not yet been finalized, has not been formalized yet. But I'm going to share with you what the draft is. And as you all probably know, the governor's was at the White House today, so he has not given this an approval for him and I to put our names on it. Here's what we have to start with. "We recognize the importance of co- and extracurricular activities for the overall well-being of students and staff, especially under the current pandemic circumstances. We also have a responsibility to keep North Dakota's citizens safe and healthy. Therefore, access to K-12 indoor facilities remains closed except for the seven uses specified in Governor Burgum's executive order dated May 11th. The number of the executive order is 2020-04.2. Access to K-12 outdoor facilities, outdoor facilities, such as track, soccer, baseball, football fields, school playgrounds, swimming pools, and green spaces, is decided at a local level." So your access to K-12 facilities is decided at a local level, but that is not carte blanche either. This decision at local level would be for local citizens and families to use while taking individual responsibility for social distancing, et cetera. So this local decision, you can decide whether you want to lock up your playground equipment. Some of you have gates that allow no one on your playgrounds. Some of you have gates that allow no one on your football fields or baseball fields. You can decide to continue to make those off-limits to citizens and families, or you can decide to open them up. This is not intended for student athletes. This is not intended for group organization, things. This is for citizens and families as a school board. Access is still restricted for school-sponsored events or for the educational purposes, except those that are outlined in the revised executive order. So again, anything that a school might put on using these facilities would have to fall in the, one of the seven uses. Your childcare, that is DHS approved, could go out and play on your playground. Your PE class that is a summer school course paid for by state dollars could go out and use the, the, the track field. So those would still need to be under those seven approved uses. District superintendents and school boards can close off any, some, or all areas of their outdoor facilities if they so choose to do so, to those citizens and families, if they choose. We encourage collaboration with local entities, such as your city council, park and rec, et cetera. So in some circumstances, where MOUs or JPAs exist between a school board and city commission, county commission, park board, an agreement between those two entities should be made within the terms of your agreement, and decisions like these need to be made at a local level between those entities. If your park district, or city commission, or county commission is the governing body and decides to institute programs, summer programs on those facilities, then they would need to start, follow the North Dakota Smart Restart Guidelines, not the K-12 Smart Restart, but the North Dakota Smart Restart Guidelines for Health and Safety, and those can be found at ndresponse.gov. ndresponse.gov. There was the question about swimming pools, and again, specifically about swimming pools earlier today. If your swimming pool is owned by the district and attached to your school, that's part of your school facility. It's an indoor facility, and that, it remains closed to all except for those seven purposes. If it is a, a pool outside, you will need to determine whether it's closed to citizens and families who are taking their own individual responsibility. If it's a MOU or JPA with the park board, you'll need to work with that board to come to some sort of agreement and determine costs. Same thing for, I know that there are many issues out there, that are many circumstances out there that have libraries. We have libraries that are city, sometimes city-funded, or county-funded. You'll need to figure out, determine what the terms of agreement are for that MOU or JPA, and determine access of the public to your school, city, county library. So that's a lot of information, and that is where we're at today. So I am very curious to hear what your questions are. Okay, I'll start reading at the top. "Can you clarify that boards still have a say in whether and how graduation ceremonies may be held in their districts?" Absolutely. So the governor said that school boards and superintendents would make the decisions about high school graduations. Same thing with K-12 Smart Restart Guidance. But there's no, there is no board approval that is necessary or required. "What is the date and time for the virtual graduation?" "May 30th, 2:00 PM Central, 1:00 PM Mountain." Very excited about that. Thanks, Kelly. Driver's ed, driver's ed can be offered, and those, just because it's a summer school, driver's ed, both behind the wheel and the classroom instruction, is a summer school course that has its course code. So that falls under the, I'm trying to see which, that falls under letter D of the governor's executive order. So driver's ed is letter D of the executive order. Very good. Um, "Can you talk about the CTE scholarship requirements, work keys deadline?" Yes, I sure can. Thank you. So the CTE scholarship, the governor gave access to our schools for the work keys administration. So all of the, all of the eligibility requirements for the CTE scholarship remain in place. The governor did not provide an executive order waiving them. The CTE scholarship application is still due June 5th. However, the application will be kept open, and students have until August 31st to submit their exam score for work keys and, or ACT, excuse me, and ACT. So the academic scholarship and the CTE scholarship, the deadline to apply is still June 5th. Those applications will be held if they are missing a qualifying work key score or a qualifying ACT score. Every student has the opportunity to submit those scores up into, through August 31st. So apply by June 5th, and you have until August 31st to get a qualifying score submitted to the department. And if a district was to do summer in the, summer school in the building, does a restart plan need to be submitted? The answer is no, it does not. Maybe Patty, if you can maybe answer in, in the chat in case for the recording too. So a restart plan does not need to be submitted. So different than the distance learning plans, when a, if a school decides to do summer school, they would just need to submit their application and, and do that with the Department of Public Instruction. That's nothing new. And in STARS, there will just be an assurance built into the STARS program that just certifies that the school is abiding by Section 4 of the North Dakota Smart Restart Guide, K-12 Guidelines. So no plan needs to be submitted to DPI or the governor's office or anyone else, just an assurance when they make their application for summer school. Great questions. Great questions. "When does the executive order of indoor facilities lift? Is there a date in mind?" There is no date in mind. The governor has been clear since March, since March 19th that school building facilities are closed until further notice. So until further notice is all I can say. I do know that the governor is going to see how this goes, planning and preparing for our fall reopening. I'm not sure if, some amendments might be made in July or August, if things go well in June, but the executive order does not- The governor has been clear since March 19th that school building facilities are closed until further notice. So until further notice is all I can say. I do know that the governor is going to see how this goes, planning and preparing for our fall reopening. I'm not sure if some amendments might be made in July or August, if things go well in June, but the executive order does not have an expiration date, and I have not heard of any date that he might have in mind. Our school district has only seven graduates, and a couple of the parents are vocal about wanting to have the ceremony at the end of June so they can have a traditional graduation ceremony. Do you foresee the guidelines for graduation ceremonies changing or relaxing after June 1? I don't anticipate or see that. I believe the governor has made the decisions about education. I believe that he's made the decisions about graduation as they stand now. If the traditional ceremony, one of the opportunities or alternatives could be for the traditional graduation ceremony to possibly take place off-site rather than the school gymnasium, maybe a community center stage or something? I know that's tough, but I, to straight answer your question, I don't see any more guidance or differing guidance coming out in, for the rest of May or now in June. Oh, I sure can name the seven programs being allowed. Patty, I'm going to send to you the executive order, and just copy and paste those from the executive order, please. And they'll all be in there. And let's see, executive order, May 11th. So I just sent that to Patty. I am also going to put here in the chat box, I think, that is the list, what I just put in there is a list to the entire executive order. Can, okay, there we go. Patty, if you could list out, instead of putting the link again, I put the link and answer that question, please put, list the seven, copy and paste from the PDF in there if you can. Thank you. Can a little league group, not school-sponsored, utilize the school baseball diamonds under the North Dakota Smart Guidelines? So as it stands now, the guidance that is out is that if you, if it's strictly a school-sponsored, or excuse me, school-owned property, and you don't have an agreement with your park district, then this decision is left solely up to you as a little league group, for a little league group. But the answer to that question is, that is a local decision that would open up access for citizens and families. So I don't believe in this governor's guidance as it stands today, and that could change. The guidance, I don't think his executive order is going to change, but his guidance may change. At this point, he's giving school districts the opportunity to provide local decision-making authority to open up their school facilities, outdoor facilities, for local citizen and family use, not for a group. I'm not sure how little league group, minimum of 15, you know, the size, all of those things are a little bit tricky when you're talking about starting a little league program with shared balls and bats. So at this point in time, if you are a school district, so to reiterate, if you are a school district that is the sole owner of your school baseball diamond, then at this point, the governor is saying that you can open up access to that outdoor school facility for local citizens and families, not necessarily little league groups. What is my feeling on how schools and education will look this fall with some colleges in the country not holding face-to-face instruction this fall? My personal opinion on that is that I believe North Dakota will have its schools access to face-to-face learning. I think that there will be access to our school buildings for in-person face-to-face learning beginning this fall. I'm not sure how long that, we will be able to maintain that. I think every school district should plan for another disruption in learning with a flu season or increased, you know, increased sickness that we generally start to see about October. But considering that we are the second state in the nation for per capita testing and that we are the fifth lowest in the nation for confirmed cases, I believe by August we'll have an even more robust testing and contact tracing system and infrastructure in place, but the governor will feel confident that will, if there is a case that's confirmed in a school, that we'll be able to have that tracing infrastructure in place to contain it. And I think we will go back to the four scenarios that we started with on March 15th. That's just my crystal ball, and my crystal ball is pretty muddy most days, so that's just my best guess at this time. But I'm optimistic, I tend to be that glass half-full type of person, so I'm optimistic we'll be able to, in some way, shape, or form, be able to have our kiddos in person for some time. I think we may have some restrictions of sanitization and maybe in-class, school lunch and breakfast programs in classrooms versus the cafeteria style. I think it will look different, but I think we're going to have access for at least some period of time. So good questions, whatever that's worth. Don't take that to Vegas. So those are all the questions that I'm seeing in the chat room right now, the Q and A. Are there any others from those online? Patty, if you want to unmute those and they can maybe pop in. Star six yourself if you are calling in. Well, either I've answered everyone's questions, or everyone's just thinking about going back Alexis, I know you're on the line. Have you been fielding any questions? Star six, Alexis.
Hi, Kirsten. I don't think we have had anything that hasn't been talked about already tonight. Kind of looking through my list here, but I think we've covered most everything.
Your board members, your school board president, she received a message earlier today from me. He got a call from the North Dakota, or not a call, an email from the North Dakota Broadband Association Director, your friend and mine, David Cruthers, who is just an amazingly generous and wonderful man. He just wanted to alert me and have our school board presidents be aware of the fact that the robust connectivity that our students have been getting is remarkable. We're getting nationwide attention because no one thinks that North Dakota can do that as well as we did, but less than 1% of our students do not have broadband access. That's unheard of in this nation. And David just reminded us that that happened because a lot of our rural telecom companies put equipment in places, stood up equipment really quickly, gave equipment to homes, provided their labor to get those homes wired, and then in addition, provided subscription services for free. And while rural telecom companies were happy to do that, understandably, they can't do that into infinity and still remain a viable business. And so just asking us as responsible leaders, elected leaders, that when we're building our budgets, that we remember that there might need to be some budget built for assisting some of our, not only our students, but possibly even some of our teachers if we're going to have them teach online in a future disruption, because we plan for future disruptions that we may need to set aside some money in local school districts' budgets in order to make sure that our students stay connected. There is an effort to allow E-Rate, those E-Rate dollars, which is kind of getting into the weeds, but I know that you as school board members do understand your revenue sources. The E-Rate funding that comes in to your school districts, we're working to get that as an allowable use. Hotspots for teachers, connectivity for students is an allowable use for your E-Rate funds. And we'll continue to work with Senator Kramer, Senator Hoven, and Congressman Armstrong
Kirsten, there's an additional question that was added to the Q and A.
Yes. Oh, I see that. Looking to the future, should schools look into revising the long-distance learning plan since we had to hastily put something together? Absolutely you should, and absolutely we will. And will DPI offer any plans or ideas? You know, as we get some breathing space between our hastily put-together plans and the rush of getting distance learning in place and now actually kind of living it for the last eight weeks? That's exactly, that's a great question, and thank you, school board members, for doing, for asking that question. Now's the time to reflect and time to talk about what went well and what didn't go so well. And that very question right there, will DPI offer any plans or ideas? I think that's a great opportunity. We did create a teams that allowed all of our high school principals, elementary, all of our principals and/or building leaders and superintendents to create a teams environment to share ideas. We're building that same thing for teachers to share ideas. We also have this PK-12 alliance that we put together. I think that is a great signal and a great question for me to say, let's leverage those teams and that PK-12 alliance to create some sort of forum of idea sharing and best practices sharing for plans and ideas that we can share out. So whoever asked that, thank you very much. And Patty and Donna, let's put that on our agenda to talk about it at our next executive leadership meeting on how we might best be able to put together that framework and that structure of forum so we can do that and work on that this summer before we have some breathing space before we become disrupted again. Great idea, whoever suggested that and asked that. So to Mr. Rogers' point, sometimes the questions are even more important than the answers.
Another question is on there. A couple are coming in.
Right. If schools have to go back to distance learning at some point next year, will there be increased rigor requirements? That I think is one of the things that also came through those lessons learned. We were kind of all thrust into this, and we were saying, is it fair to give an A? Is it fair to give an F? Is it fair to fail? Should we do pass? Should we just do pass/fail? So without knowing what would, what could or should be expected of student work and teacher instruction, we were letting it, you know, I guess it was, somebody described it as the wild, wild west out there, and I think maybe it probably was. So certainly, as we go back to, if we have to go back to distance learning, I think there's the great expectation likely on school board members as well as our citizens, taxpayers, that would like and probably insist on some better expectations, some clearer expectations of what teaching looks like and what learning looks like. And so, yes, we are working on that as well, not only just in North Dakota, but others across the nation are struggling with this as well. We don't want to be punitive, but we understand that $83 million a day in North Dakota goes to schools for teaching and learning, and there is that expectation that I know school board members understand better than most, that there's the expectation of what's the return on the investment for those $83 million a day that our state invests in our schools. So yes, that is on our radar as well. Really good, bright group tonight. You're always bright, but really good probing questions tonight. Is there a way the governor could write an official resolution? Oh, thanking the local internet providers for their generosity. That is a great idea, Jason. Absolutely. Absolutely. That's a great idea. Alexis, maybe you want to share that our co-hosted school board member, oh, yes, perfect, Alexis. Okay. Our co-hosted, our event that the North Dakota School Boards Association and North Dakota Department of Public Construction host each year is on the calendar for July 22nd, and we will have two options. We'll have an in-person option for those of you that learn better face-to-face, and we'll have a virtual option as well for those of you who don't want to travel, don't feel safe to travel, or just can't travel. So I think it's going to be as good, if not bigger and better than ever. So please, share that with all of your board members, July 22nd. Get that on your calendar for either virtual or face-to-face meeting and convening so we can all talk about some of these things that we're talking about right here, right now. What's the rigor? What's the, what's the expectation? Shall we revise our plans? Lots of great ideas. Thanks, Alexis. Along the lines of previous question for revising plans, should we include parents with helping to adjust the plan? Please do. Please do. One of the things that I think we've learned so, so frequently, and I think emphatically during this, is how important that school-to-home connection is. As you know, I have a family cabinet that I used to meet with every quarter for a full day. I've been meeting with those 20 family members weekly for over an hour on Saturday mornings, and their insight and their appreciation has grown into the world of what is required of K-12 education. But I think conversely, our educators have really grown in their understanding of how important family support is, and it's our goal that we never go back to the way that it used to be, two camps. So if you have the opportunity in your community, in your school district, to include parents on those planning teams about what the distance learning plan should look like, what the rigor should look like, and what grading should look like, please include parents or grandparents or aunties and uncles, whoever that important family member is. I'd also consider including a student, and not just your student council, but consider adding a student from an elementary level, the middle school level, and a high school level. They'll provide some pretty important insight into what can be better. So great question. Oh, Heidi, thanks. Looking forward to the 22nd event, too. And Kelly wants to know how we sign up for that. Patty, do we have a website yet up for registration?
At this point, we do not. Alexis and I are just working out the details, so we will hopefully have something by next week's meeting.
That's perfect. And in the meantime, if you feel like you're, like me when I was on the school board, if you feel like you're going to forget about it, email Patty, and she can add your name to a list. So as soon as the registration goes live, we kind of keep running lists like that of people like, I want to do that. And when the registration goes live, we email those people a direct link as kind of a prob. Lots to digest. If you ever have questions in between our weekly Wednesday updates, please don't ever hesitate to email us at the department or call up Alexis or call either Alexis or me or any of our staff, and we will get your questions answered. Well, seeing no more questions and hearing no more on the line, I will just thank everyone for their commitment. I will wish everyone luck for those of you that are having graduation ceremonies this weekend. And I just truly, I want to say how grateful I am. We know how hard your job is, especially in times like this. Everyone needs and wants to talk to a school board member during the month of May, whether it be about graduation or activities, and now you add in a pandemic. I know that your phones aren't very quiet either, and neither are your email inboxes, so thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for committing to the students in your community. They really do rely on you as adults to make sure that they have what they need. So thanks again, and we'll talk again next week. Take care, everyone.